Independent School District, 834 to order. Would the Secretary, Sheri, would you please read the roll?
Chair Potajek.
Here.
Vice Chair Pearson.
Here.
Treasurer Weisberg.
Here.
Clerk Stivlin.
Here.
Director Burns.
Here.
Director Pelletier.
Here.
Director Riley. Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And who is reading our district mission?
I have that.
Good, Shelley. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools, in partnership with students, family, and community, is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. School Board goals.
And I have our new school board goals that were just ratified at the last meeting. In partnership with community, parents, and students, the School Board of Stillwater Area Public Schools ensures excellence in education by increasing student achievement for all students, securing long-term financial stability of the district, and increasing community trust and engagement.
Okay, thank you. And we, next item is the approval of the agenda. Mark?
I'll move.
So move, is there a second?
I'll second.
Shelley, second. All those in favors?
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to add an action item to the agenda that would be an authorization to enter into an exploratory conversation and to negotiate a possible agreement related to the contract with the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tina, second. All those in favors?
Can I, before we chair vote on this, so, I think we're here, we were told that, before, we have a discussion, right? And we have a second motion, so we have a discussion ongoing, whether we're going to approve the amended agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I'm not sure why we are amending the agenda. This was intended to be a 15-minute meeting, that the public has, again, you know my feeling about amending the agenda at the last minute. And, and, not only are we amending the agenda at the last minute, but we're doing so with a very significant item, agenda item. And that, again, our job is to separate in our school board goals, increasing community trust and engagement. We are, we're, how are we?
Please, like I said, it's very difficult to hear, so in honor of the speakers, hold your response.
I'm concerned that we are not serving the public in the best way by amending the agenda at, at, at the last minute, amending the agenda with what could potentially be the biggest agenda item that we can have in a year. And finally, I don't believe it's even fair to other board members when we anticipate a short meeting and this is going to require a significant amount of discussion.
I don't expect that this will require a lot of discussion. I think as the action item comes forward, I think you'll understand that it really doesn't require a lot of discussion at this time.
I'm vehemently opposed and outright disgusted. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
A motion in the second has been made to add an action item. All those in favors signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries for three. Next on the agenda is the superintendent report.
I have four, now maybe five things, just to quickly briefly update the community and the board on. On Monday, I met, and Bob McDowell accompanied me with the Council of City Mayors. And the conversation at the table, it's mayors from all over Minnesota are encouraged to come and bring their superintendents and leadership staff. And the conversation that we had was the development of pathways and workforce supports and options for our students, and how to better engage our students in their secondary experiences here within the district. And many of the districts are sharing what they did. They were also sharing a little bit about the partnerships that they're encouraging between cities, counties, and school districts. And so, I'd just like to thank Mary McComer and Ann Burt from Oak Park Heights and Woodbury for inviting us and accompanying us to that meeting. It was very interesting. Secondly, the last board meeting, a board, a community member had questioned whether we really had saved or reinvested the 1.2 million from the school closures, and we have. And so, what I'd like to do is at a further meeting, either have a short presentation for the board where their savings are, and I just want to remind people from the community that those savings were reinvested into transportation, a middle school model, and a ninth-grade pony center at the high school. And so, we've achieved, achieved those savings and reinvestments, with the exception of we didn't totally close Oak Park, we have our transitions program there. So, custodial and heat, some of those things, brought it down just a short fraction of that, but we're happy to share that. Also, I'd like to thank Eric Anderson and Anna Wilsack. They will be starting up the summer success program for our students, and we have student leaders who are being trained today in that also. And so, they'll be welcoming our students, helping to give them an extra support over the summer as they get ready for the next school year. The fourth thing is that the wall that heals is a Vietnam, a replica of the Vietnam Vet Memorial, and it will be here July 25th through the 28th at the Old Athletic Field, 1338 Sixth Avenue South. And it is supported by the Fraternal Order of the Eagles '94. And they are, they raised $10,000 to bring the wall here, and they have over 150 volunteers who will be there and supporting, supporting that effort. So, it's really a great opportunity for Stillwater, and I hope people get out there to take advantage of that. It's really a moving experience if you haven't been able to do that. And then finally, my fifth piece is just with the added motion. You know, from my perspective as a superintendent, I understand that the board's biggest job is to hire a superintendent. Unfortunately, sometimes that is firing a superintendent, but the piece that comes in the middle is working with the superintendent. And this, in my opinion, is not a governance act, it's more of a political act. So, with the transparency, I just want to remind the community that after the evaluation, I did invite board members to come in and have a conversation with me about their individual evaluations, so we could try and move forward. And I do thank the board members that have taken me up on that opportunity already. That's it.
Thank you. Moving along, we come to the consent agenda, and there are four items, the minutes of the June 27, 2019 business meeting, dispersment register, June 29 through July 12, human resource personnel report, and identify official with authority for MDE.
So moved.
Will move to pass the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And? I saw Tina's hand first, so I'm gonna go with her on that. So, the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favors signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. Next, we have the added item, the exploratory that Director Stivlin mentioned, and so, you have the floor.
Okay. I just have some prepared remarks here. During Superintendent Pontrelli's recent self-evaluation, she asked the board and the community to hit the reset button and to move beyond tension caused by decisions made in the past. She acknowledged that there is tension between the board and administration, and that this is causing polarity and misunderstanding throughout our community. She also said that hard feelings about past decisions cannot continue to drive our current and future conversations. I would agree that there is tension between the board and our superintendent, and I would agree that there is tension, and there is misinformation that travels throughout our community. However, I wholeheartedly disagree with the accusation that the board members here today are making decisions on current or future plans based on hard feelings from the past.
Where the ghost girl? Please restrain.
Every board member here today has, was elected, fair and square, with overwhelming support from our entire community. And I believe that each and every one of us works hard every day to make the best decisions we can on behalf of all of our students in this community, and it is disrespectful to suggest otherwise. It just is disrespectful.
Well, Claire, if we have to clear, please honor and respect who's ever speaking. Do not interrupt. That's not appropriate.
Where's the open forum?
We don't.
It was on the agenda, Mike. Where's the open forum?
It was removed.
Why?
If you're gonna do this, there should be an open forum.
Yeah. You're out of order, Allison.
You're out of order when you lie and during election times.
I would ask you to leave. I would ask you to leave, please.
No.
No.
You cannot continue to interrupt.
I would like to answer your question. Hey, hey, hey.
I can get assistance and have you removed.
You are our public school board, and we are the public.
Yes, I understand, and I'm trying to speak. And I can't speak if everyone's yelling, so please be quiet and let me finish, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be the respectful thing to do.
Okay.
To answer your question, Allison, the reason why there is no open forum is because we typically, at this time of, when we have a short meeting for dispersments in human resources, we don't have a human, we don't have an open forum, and it was suggested by our superintendent during the meeting to do that, okay? It's not.
But why didn't it? Here.
If you've got a short, if you've got a short meeting, why do you have to just?
Let me finish.
Sheri, you are out of order.
No, you're out of order.
You're out of order.
I'm sorry. We'll let you finish.
It is clear, it is clear to me that something needs to change. I do not know what that looks like. I don't know right now exactly what that change looks like, okay? I am no longer willing to accept the current reality. What we need in our leadership from our board and from our superintendent is an opportunity for us to have some authentic conversation about what is best for all of us going forward. That is what we need. We need to listen to each other. We need to stop rushing to judgment. We need to have an open mind. I've been accused of a lot of things that I don't deserve, okay? And a lot of other people have been accused of things that they don't deserve either. This is not good for our community. It's just not. And it's our job as leaders to fix it. So that's what this is about. If hitting the reset button is what the superintendent has called for, then for me, this is what the reset button looks like. Therefore, I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution to authorize the board chair, Mike Potajek, and board clerk, Sarah Stivlin, to enter into exploratory conversation and to pursue a possible separation agreement with the superintendent.
What does a possible separation mean?
That's the resolution. They don't get to talk. They don't get to talk. We need a second.
You're out of order.
We need a second. I've made a motion. We need a second.
Keep it up, and you're gonna be out of here.
I'll second.
I will call.
We have a second.
Can I ask a question? Did you know?
Who made the second?
I did. She did.
Okay, thank you.
Did you know, Chair Potajek, when you took the forum off of the agenda, that this was the plan?
I did not take it off the agenda.
Who made, who made the call to take the forum off the agenda?
Shelley.
I can just say, I received, well, Mike and I both received a email from Superintendent Pontrelli just saying, normally when we have this meeting, we don't have an open forum. Would we like to have it? And I said, that's what I expected, that it would like to be done there. And so, I don't even know if Mike was in town when I said that.
To Superintendent Pontrelli, did you know?
I was not, I was not aware that this agenda item would be added today. So, you know, typically, that's what we do, is it's just dispersments and HR report. And so, we many times don't have a superintendent's report, we don't have student reports, we try to keep it short just to keep our bills and HR and that kind of thing moving. So, I wasn't aware that this was until right before I walked in here, being added, so. And I did send something out saying, yes, we usually do this. Shelley said she was in support of that. Mike said, okay, thanks. So, I had shared that if I hadn't heard something by yesterday morning, we would take it off.
This is a perfect example of what we need to fix, because it's a simple decision about having the open forum or not, and people are making assumptions about nefarious purposes, which are not there. They're not there.
They're obviously there.
You know what? We'll have an open forum at our next meeting, and I invite each and every one of you to come up and speak, if that's what you want. There were no nefarious reasons for closing it out this time.
More than 12, Sarah? Each and every one of us?
You want to have an open session? We can. We have a way to do that.
You can't speak whenever you want to. That's not the way the meeting is gonna work, and if it continues, we're gonna have to ask people to leave. If they refuse to leave, we will get help to have you removed.
You shut down the problem?
Can I just please clarify something?
This is absurd.
Can I just please clarify? What this resolution does, basically, it just authorizes us to have a conversation with the superintendent, which is much needed, as I just laid out, and as she laid out in her own self-evaluation process. We all agree that something needs to be fixed. I said in my statement, I don't really know exactly what that looks like, but we can't do anything until we have a conversation. That's what this is about. It's all it is, a conversation. There are lots of options on the table of what we can do. And people are jumping to conclusions, and that's not fair. I've tried to call you three times in the past week, Jennifer.
Are you shouting at me? This is ridiculous.
I am shouting at you. You wanna know more about what's going on? You wanna be a part of the conversation? You need to answer my whole house.
Oh, I know, I know full well what's going on, so.
No, you don't.
I think we can have a really, let's work on having an adult discussion and not shouting.
Thank you. Other comments, Mark?
Also, I have several comments. I guess the first is that this does take a lot of discussion. So when we talk about adding it to the agenda, it does take a lot of discussion.
It's an authorization for Mike and I to have a conversation with the superintendent. That's it.
Why do we need a resolution to have a conversation with the superintendent?
Because that's what legal counsel told us.
We can't, can't have a conversation about how to work together with, without having a resolution?
It has the possible separation agreement in the, in the, in the motion.
So, the reason why it has to be a resolution, why are you bringing this agenda item today, is so that it can lead to termination. Otherwise, if we're, if we're talking about having conversation, about working through issues, that does not need a resolution. So the only reason why we're talking about a resolution today is because of the aspect of termination of the contract.
And, Mark, I would not use the word termination. No, seriously, folks. I, I have talked to counsel, and termination is a completely different process than negotiation.
Okay.
And so, terminology, and you know that better than most people here, is a different process, and I've been reminded that several times by counsel.
Termination has a lot of meanings, right? Termination of employment has a lot of different meanings. So, you can have definitions of separation, termination, they have a lot of meanings, okay? They do.
That's not what counsel tells us.
Yeah, well, we're just being clear that termination is not what we're talking about. A lot of people have made that assumption, and that is incorrect.
And what is, what is the last sentence of the resolution?
Separation agreement.
Okay.
That's very different. It's very different.
Now, it, really, folks, I have talked at length with counsel on this and have been reminded they're very different acts. For the negotiations actually to work and to bring finality to it, it would have to be agreed by both parties. So that is not termination.
I don't know if that's true or not, but.
Well, and you know, and I've encouraged you to talk directly with counsel if you were concerned about that.
And I may need to.
Yes.
So, so back to my original point, which is, this takes discussion to have this, because this is something more than having a conversation. It simply is. It's the only reason that we're having a resolution today. If we want to have conversation, if we wanna have constructive conversation, how do we work through our differences? We can do that without a resolution. We simply can. We can call a work session, we have many, we can have mediation. There are many, many ways of having a conversation that don't require a resolution today at this meeting. I'm, I'm very concerned about the resolution about separation agreement. I'm, I'm concerned because primarily, we do not, we are not in the position to negotiate that at this point. We have no evidence that that is the direction that this community wants to go. If we, and when I say no evidence, maybe that's a strong word, we have anecdotal evidence that there are some people that are unhappy, we have anecdotal evidence that are, that there are people who are very happy. So what do we do as, as a board? How do we act appropriately? If we're going to make decisions that have tremendous impact on the future of our district, on the children who are in the, in the district, the children who are yet to be born, who are coming into this district, our decisions have tremendous impact. Our decisions, therefore, should be very careful, and they should be based on evidence. I do not feel that we have anywhere near sufficient evidence to even bring this topic up. I really don't.
That's not worth debating. You need to have evidence to just authorize someone to have a conversation.
Okay. Well, let's do this. Orderly go through the chair.
May I, and I just wanna just finish a few more comments, but thank you. We are in the process of authorizing a, a survey, a scientific survey to be done that's going to be at the cost of taxpayers, tens of thousands of dollars. Why? Why is this resolution being brought today before we have even sent the survey out, before we have any idea what the results of that survey are going to be? We don't know. Why would we, why would we even introduce this topic before we have evidence? So I'm very concerned about the timing here. I'm concerned about how our process went with the evaluation. It is why I voted no to, I did not approve the evaluation because I was concerned at the process for approaching, coming to conclusions before we go through an evidentiary-gaining process.
No conclusions have been made.
Then why are we having a resolution?
Many times.
If, if no conclusion has been reached, why, why are we not waiting until we gather information and evidence and understand what the community really says, what their beliefs are? Because we represent the community, not a portion of the community nor our own personal beliefs.
Could we have an answer to his questions, please?
If, if people choose to.
For the moment, at least.
Please.
I was disappointed with the evaluation process, too. I was hopeful that we could have a discussion, like most evaluations are done. I think when I spoke with our attorney, she said in her 30 years of practice, she'd never heard of a superintendent requesting an open evaluation, which unfortunately meant that we couldn't discuss a lot of things that would have been good to discuss.
I don't mean to interrupt.
Well, I think Jen had.
Well, I, to that point and to Director Burns' point, so let's, so let's, once again, in Stillwater, let's throw the baby out with the bathwater. I, this is, I, I'm, I'm at a complete loss as to, we have issues with this, with the evaluation, questions with the evaluation. We have Morris Leatherman who suggested we do a survey that goes out to the public. We, we operate, ignore both of those, you know, without, to Mark's point, without having a proper discussion. This is the absolute antithesis of transparency, bringing the community together, listening to the community. I've heard it over and over and over ad nauseam for two years, and we're doing exactly what elected officials here at this table criticize the previous board for.
Mark, go, Mark. The only reason I, I had raised my hand is because I think there is some confusion about the process, the evaluation process. We, we did have the opportunity to, to, to discuss. We did have an opportunity. There's nothing that prohibits a summary from, from being shared with the public, a summary of, of the evaluation. And so, I think there is some confusion out there about what we had the right to do. It was more a choice of what was done. We had the right to summarize the evaluation results, but that was not done. Please.
I was told it was a private document, and we couldn't discuss it. As a matter of fact, it was so private that we had to get extra permission to even be able to see the previous evaluations as a board.
And, and what I said is that we have the right to, at a minimum, to have a summary of the evaluation shared with the public.
Okay, but that's still not a discussion that, that I would have liked to have had, of an actual discussion, going over everything, and we were not allowed to do that in public.
So that's why we're doing this? I mean, is that the, is that why we're doing this? I'm asking.
Yeah, but Jen, please be recognized.
Nothing is normal about this.
Were you finished? I'm finished. Okay.
I was just gonna say about the survey, the last survey that Morris Leatherman did, those results were completely ignored. As a matter of fact, the meeting where those survey, those survey results were announced isn't even on the website. It's only recorded, and it's only, you have to hit reset every like eight seconds to be able to hear it. But that survey asked the community if they wanted schools closed. 60-plus percent said no. 60-plus percent voted for this board.
This is school closures.
Please restrain yourself.
Thank you. I, I agree. I, I voted against having this day because I don't know the right way to do it. We need to have the conversation. I think what it comes down to is, do we feel like we can, there's anything that can help? I think that's the question we're answering today. Is there anything that can help, or is there not? And each of us has to answer that question ourselves, and that's what we were elected to do. So, I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know how the right way is to have a conversation, but I, I think we, we've been trying, and it's, we're still, that tension is still here, and we can't seem to get past it.
One of the things that I've shared in our superintendent board chair meetings is, we're not the first district to have struggles that you have to go through, correct? And you've heard the community of both sides talking about board works, needs to work better together, administration and board need to work better together. I couldn't agree more. That's why, you know, I hesitate a little even when I talk about setting the reset, because that doesn't mean that we don't remember the things that have happened for the past, but we have to try and move forward. And what I had shared during those superintendent board chair meetings is that many school districts, school boards, sit down and work with a facilitator. You are members of the Minnesota School Board Association. There are people that will come in and work with you, and they'll work with you and administration to be an effective board and learn how to move forward, because again, we aren't the only community who's gone through difficult times. So that is a resource that you have. I've been asking for that since last year, and I think it's really something that if you truly want to work through, I've shared with you that, you know, when there are challenges, I feel the best way is through. You have to work through it, and you have to work through it together. And I've said time and time again that myself and my staff want to do that. You know, a couple of you have come in and talked to me about the evaluations individually and given me feedback on how I can improve, how we can improve as a, a team, and we are going to do that. But I need it to be a two-way street. And so, you know, I think possibly that's what Sarah's talking about, but the board has to make that decision, too, if it's gonna be a two-way street or not. You have to decide if you wanna do that.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, so just go back and wanna reiterate one point that I feel very strongly about, which is, I do not believe that it is appropriate to enter into the discussions that are, that are contemplated by this resolution based on assumptions in any way. I, I believe strongly that we need evidence, true evidence, before we come to conclusions. We've talked, I've, I've, I heard that discussion on this board, or on previous boards, when I was in the audience. We need to gather the facts. We need to gather the facts. We have to get evidence. And I feel that without having an understanding of truly where the community is, what support we have for the current setup, it is premature. It is premature to bring this resolution. Please.
And I was just going to say that I know that a lot of people think that this has only to do with school closures and that is not the case. I was very hopeful that this board could work, this administration could work with this board and I haven't seen that to be the case. I'm aware it's a two-way street.
To me, there are alternatives. I see that step number one is what we're doing. We all agreed to engage Morris Leatherman in a survey. Why are we short-circuiting that? Why are we not going through that process first? And then potentially during that process or as a result of that process, having a discussion, a two-way discussion. If you see a two-way street, it should be a two-way street. But can we work through it? Because there are real ramifications for going down a road without, without making sure you have ticked every single box.
I understand that. And, you know, I just want to clarify, I don't see the connection at all between the survey that's being done that will help us inform the facilities process because that's why the survey was, is being conducted, to help understand more about where the community is at and whether they will support a bond or levy, you know, what kind of, where is the community at in terms of supporting additional expenses to support this growing community?
Right.
Right? So that's what the survey is about. It has nothing to do with what we're talking about today. I don't, I am not aware of any questions or any information that we would gain from that survey. I haven't seen any questions at all. So I don't, I don't know where that, that's not what the survey is for.
But I would say, I don't mean to
No. And I do want to keep it open to everybody. So if you hold that. Carissa.
I can just speak to the survey. Having worked with Morris Leatherman before, there are always a series of standard questions at the beginning that ask kind of climate questions about your community. So some of the questions are things about how do you rate the performance of your administration? How do you rate the performance of your school board? How do you feel the administration has handled your tax dollars? Some of the investment questions. So there is a series of questions at the beginning of that survey that will get you some of that information that you're discussing.
Yep. One of the things I'd say too, and it has to be considered, I think, is one, you cannot have the discussion that we are having right now in private in a closed meeting. You can't do that. One of the difficulties you see this morning is it's very difficult when the public comes in because this is such an emotional issue in our district. It just is. And that's evidence of it. And does that bring us closer together or does that bring us further apart? I don't know.
You know what? Chair Potaschek, I'm going to talk to you.
Michelle.
No, no, don't cycle me. Now, I'll tell you where I'm coming from. I've been working forty-plus hours a week paying the taxes to this
You can't talk. You're out of order.
So that my children
You are out of order.
In the education and they are getting a good one. And you know what? Using the bus, playing games. Why don't you be of fun?
You're welcome to come and talk.
You know what? I'm not leaving.
You can stay, but you have to follow procedure. You do not have a right to disrupt the meeting.
I said, I leave this
You do not have a right to disrupt the meeting.
But I can't take it anymore.
Please sit down.
So just stop with that.
Please sit down.
That's what I'm saying.
Sit down, please.
So stop with it.
Please sit down.
I've been paying money to the school and I have to tell you, my kids are getting a good education under Superintendent Pontrelli's direction. And the thing that makes me upset is when people are playing games like this. Why don't you be of fun?
Would you sit down, please?
Stop playing games.
You have to stop from disrupting the meeting.
You know what? This meeting needs to be disrupted. Because this is what, no, it needs to be disrupted.
Please, please, sit down. It makes the point. How can we have a discussion? This is a decision the board must make, either for, against, or delay.
My tax dollars.
You can come to open for and speak. You are not right to cut in. We talked, we addressed that.
Yeah, I have rights to cut in because I'm paying money.
We addressed that earlier. Jennifer.
Thank you. I would like to say that when you add an agenda item such as the magnitude of this at the last hour on the day of, and then you take away the forum so the public can't speak, you must expect that this is going to happen.
Yeah. But that was not, that was not cause and effect. And that's an explanation.
I have a question. So could you just speak to the, because I'm a little confused about the motion that's on the table and what, what the options are that are to be considered to come out of these discussions?
The motion, I'll read it again, is to enter into exploratory conversation and to pursue a possible separation agreement with the superintendent. And that means exactly what it means. It's open-ended. It's just a conversation. So no, no conclusions have been made, no agreements, no nothing, just a conversation.
Could I ask a follow-up? So if it's
Well, let me see if somebody else wants to talk as well.
Just one line.
Go ahead.
Is this a motion or a resolution?
It's both.
I guess my follow-up is if it's a possible separation agreement with the superintendent, why not first, if you say possible, why not first have a discussion about where we're at? What do we need to improve on? Look ourselves in the mirror and see what we are doing to perpetuate the divide. I put myself in that as well. All of us look in the mirror and say, what are we doing to perpetuate the divide in this community?
I believe we are doing that.
And also work, I don't believe we are, actually. And also work with the superintendent before we take this drastic, do you realize what this is doing to our children? As, as one of the forty-plus emails that I got yesterday over a 24-hour period of time, the one that struck me in my head that hasn't left it is, there are 12 precious years to raise a child. And do you know what a separation agreement, what this drama is doing to our community and to our kids? And they have 12 years to raise them and the consequences of that? So I want to ask, what are the consequences of this? Have you weighed the consequences of getting rid of superintendent, whatever the weasel word, excuse me, whatever the word is, termination or buyout, whatever it is, whatever the appropriate terminology is? Have we thought about the consequences? What's the end game? So if we buy her out at, to the tune of $500,000 plus, where, we all know we don't have any money, right? We don't, where's that money coming from? If we terminate her, who's going to want to come here?
These are all valid questions. Can I just answer?
Go ahead.
These are all valid questions. They're all important for us to consider. This is just the beginning. This is a resolution for us to begin a serious conversation with intention about how to fix the problems that you've just described, okay? You say, take a look at ourselves and what are we doing to perpetuate the divide? Well, I'll tell you what, if we don't do this, we let it continue as is, okay? We need to be real. We need to be real about what the issues are. We need to have real conversation with real, with real results. That's what we need. But that's what this is, the beginning of.
Please, let her
That is what this is the beginning of. A lot of people have jumped to conclusions about what this is about. I cannot be more clear. This is about a conversation with multiple options and multiple directions.
Mark has his hand.
We would have benefited a lot, as Liz just spoke earlier, if we could have had a closed session regarding the evaluation because then as a board with superintendent, we could have dug in and really, really raised some, you know, really had a good conversation about some of the pieces that are in that evaluation. But we didn't have that because we were in an open meeting, okay? So we can't have that now because it's, we can't have a closed session for just any old reason. We have to have a reason. And so that part of it is done. So this is something separate. It's a beginning of a process and all of those things are important for us to consider as we move forward. This is really, truly a way to get everybody on this board on the same page. At least this way, if this resolution is passed, we know who votes for it, we know who votes against it, we know if it passes. And we know, and we know what's going on. Instead of, you know, working around, you know, trying to figure out a way and negotiate or whatever in behind the scenes, that's not okay.
Mark. Thank you. Couple of points, or three points. First is, closed meeting, open meeting. I believe that we can call a closed meeting. Now, we can, we can, if, we can, we have the right, we may call a closed meeting for the purposes of evaluating an employee who is under board control. We have that right. We don't, it doesn't have
The person, the subject of the meeting has the right to call for it to be open, though.
That's right. That's right. That doesn't mean that we can call
That's one thing we may discuss in this conversation.
So I think we have the right to call a closed meeting if that's what's important. The second is that when we talk about, when you mentioned having a conversation, well, the way the resolution reads is that there's a conversation between the board chair, clerk, and the superintendent. Where does that leave me? Where does that leave the community?
Exactly.
And then finally, I want to answer the question that you raised to me about where does the Morris Leatherman, how does that relate to this? I think it relates exactly to this conversation because some of the emails that we have received, some of the communications we have received, that how is the community going to support a bond referendum or a levy referendum in the future with the current administration? Well, let's find out if the community will support a bond referendum or levy referendum in its current, in its current configuration. That's what the, that's what the Morris Leatherman survey is to do. And if, we'll find out. We will learn.
Yeah. So if I understand you, what you're saying, we will find out from the survey if we can pass a levy renewal or a bond issue with the current administration. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, my understanding is, from what Carissa had said, is that questions are going to ask, would you support a bond referendum or a levy referendum? And I believe that there's also questions, Chris had mentioned about the current administration. In my opinion, that it's, I would be in favor of that, I am in favor of that survey, a very expensive survey, because it would give us information, very important information.
And my point, I'm just trying to say, I believe the timeline, hopefully we'll get, the board will see the survey Friday or so, or soon thereafter.
Not the results, but the questions.
The questions.
Yeah.
The draft of it. Now, I don't know, I hope, the kind of question that you posed is in that survey. I think it'll be asked a little more discreet than perhaps I phrased it. But I'm not positive that it's going to be in there. But that's kind of one of the issues, underlying issues. Here, that's very important because we know, having gone through budget adjustments this year, that that hurt and affected a lot of people and a lot of programs. If we fail to pass a renewal, that makes that look like a very small problem. So I'm saying, that's in the game. That's, that's part of the process, unfortunately. And, and I'm saying, in the best of times, levies are hard to pass, in the best of times. I, I don't know, regardless of where this issue goes, I don't know if the district is going to be able to come together and pass either program, whether it's a levy or whether it's bonds for new facilities. But that's part of here. I don't think any board member who's sitting here is taking this lightly. I don't think anybody who's sitting here hasn't dwelled on this. I had a caller yesterday who was advocating, like many of the people sitting in the audience, and she said, you know, I have a hard time discerning what is truth. But all of us have trouble with that. And, and I think we have to respect one another how we struggle with that. That doesn't mean that at the end of the day, that everybody's going to hug and shake hands and say, yeah, I see what you did. But I think you need to realize there are seven people on this board who will make a decision and, and it's not easy. I suspect everybody who's sitting here didn't sleep too well last night. I can't speak for others, but I'm
I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda, so I said, fuck.
Anybody else?
Can I just ask one question? A simple question, just because of what you just said. So yesterday, we met chair superintendent meeting. This did not come up. Did you know this was happening today, yesterday?
When we met, no.
Not about, yeah, our question.
Again, the possibility, we've talked directly with the superintendent on these possibilities.
Just the last thing, share comment that you said. We want to know the truth, we're trying to find, let's, let's seek the truth. Let's seek it before we take action. That's all I'm saying.
That's exactly what the resolution is for.
It's premature. We don't have information yet.
I'm sorry, I can't recognize people in the audience. Any other comments, thoughts? Jennifer?
Just want to recognize that our well-loved and esteemed Don Hovland tried to raise his hand and I understand that you, you can't do that, but I did want to acknowledge that Mr. Hovland had something to say and just lastly acknowledge that I think this is disgusting. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I don't see any, anybody else who wishes a comment, so would you read one more time the resolution? And because it is a resolution, I believe it has to be a roll call vote. And so Sherri will read off the roll call.
This is a motion, I've made a motion to approve a resolution to authorize Mike Potaschek, board chair, and Sarah Stivland, board clerk, to enter into exploratory conversation and to pursue a possible separation agreement with the superintendent.
Sherri, please.
Do you have a second?
There's a second.
Chair Potaschek?
I think I'm last.
Alphabetical?
Yes.
Director Burns?
May.
Vice Chair Pearson?
Aye.
Nay.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Stivland?
Aye.
Director Stivland? And Director Weisberg?
Aye.
And Board Chair Potaschek?
Aye. Motion carries, I believe, five-two. Moving on to board member reports, board chair report, this is the most important issue. We did meet yesterday with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. When I say we, I'm talking about myself and Shelley. We went through upcoming agendas for future meetings and we will get minutes to you, I believe, on that. Working group reports. Shelley, do you want to talk about community engagement?
Community engagement met yesterday and I think you all received minutes from us. We just talked about the community design team is getting close to our 100 members and we should have it to the board for board action July 25th. And then we just talked about ways that we can get out and start gathering feedback from the thought exchange, getting a little deeper into some of those things, actually a lot from that.
Finance and operations?
We haven't met since our last meeting.
Legislative, as I talked about at the last meeting, several board members, including Sarah, Intine, and I, attended the C regional meeting and discussed the legislation that was passed at the last session. Personnel. Shelley, do you have anything?
I have not met.
Okay. Policy. Sarah?
Yeah, policy met yesterday as well. I feel like we had a very hard-working, productive, and positive meeting. We have, we have a lot of work in, in process. We have, we have a lot of work in the, in process, so coming in the next few months, we'll be having things coming forward to the board, something specific that will be coming up at our next meeting, with, hopefully, if everything goes well. We will be having a few additions to our policy number 209, which we approved last summer, and these are relating to some of the leftover policies that we've had in the past relating to the BGP that we felt were important to continue forward in this new policy that we didn't quite capture when we did it last time. So just a couple things, those will be in our packet for the next meeting, so that'll be the first reading. And so if you have any questions or comments about that, just let me know, and we'll bring it back to our policy meeting to give it further discussion, consideration. But I feel like we worked really hard to get to the language where it is, and I feel, I feel very good about where we landed on that. I hope you all agree. And our next policy meeting is the 22nd of July.
Okay. Board member reports, Mark, I think we'll start it. You're in.
I've got nothing to report.
Sarah?
Nothing.
Nothing for me?
Nothing.
Jennifer?
I do, thank you. Just quickly, I just wanted to say publicly, Mitch, I'm gonna, sorry kiddo that I'm gonna just completely botch this last name, Ranky. He's a 2014 graduate of Stillwater Area High School. He's a member of the NHL champions, St. Louis Blues, and he's bringing the Stanley Cup to the, St. Croix, is that right? Okay. He's, he's bringing the, the cup to the St. Croix Valley Rec Center on July 22nd, and I just wanted to comment that, I just love this quote so much, this was, you know, just when you hear a young gentleman, and then he's one of our Pony graduates, speak like this, you just know, it's a source of pride. So he said, "Just being able to share this with the community will be really special. I owe a lot to this community, so I wanted to make sure everyone got to be a part of it." Wonderful sentiment, and just a, clearly a great kid. So I just wanted, again, that's July 22nd. I had prepared this, and now I guess it's a moot point, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Of the nearly, or actually probably more than this, forty emails that we received over the course of 24 hours yesterday in support of Superintendent Pontrelli, the one message that struck me, that struck with me was the comment from one of our residents that said, "It is time to put away grudges and use your tenure to create a vision for those who need it most, the students. They only have 12 years to be educated and have nothing to do with past decisions." It sums up quite perfectly how I feel as well. As public servants, we owe it to our community to hear how we feel, to know where we stand on issues affecting our families. Transparency equates to trust. So to that end, I would like to state for the record that I fully support this administration and the trajectory they have set under the leadership of Denise Pontrelli. And to the insinuation that we could never pass a levy under her leadership, I would challenge the board, and again, this is moot at this point, but let's sincerely read our emails. Let's trust our staff who say that they support Denise Pontrelli. Let's see what our students are up to, and frankly, let's look around the room right The three words that I have to say to that question of, can we pass a levy under this administration and this community at this time, is yes, we can. Thank you.
We are adjourned.